I, to impose eminent domain. The same loophole is being used today in Mount Pleasant. Open land, which because of the diverse ownership and inconsistent planning, impairs the growth of a community. Why is it impairing the growth? Because you changed the zoning from agricultural to resident, from agricultural and residential to a business park. Under those circumstances, couldn't any area fit that description for blight if you simply vote to change its intended purpose? Certainly, opposition from the public influenced the unanimous decisions to walk away from blighting efforts in both Oak Creek and Greenfield. But it was the recognition by the common council members, they were not just violating the spirit of what eminent domain was designed to do, but they were putting profit-making developers ahead of their own residents. They chose to say, "No, I have no such hope for tonight." How many of you have sat down with these residents, person to person, and discussed why they believe what you are doing is wrong? How many of you have called them up? In every single meeting I have attended leading up to this vote tonight, not a single person has spoken in favor of lighting their property. Not one. The decision you make tonight, we know, will not be based on what residents have to say. And for that, you should be ashamed. When Amazon, Boeing, and Tesla built their giant corporation development sites, they bought their own land. Mr. Loyce says the village had to make these purchases for Foxconn. Otherwise, the prices for property would have skyrocketed. Foxconn must be so pleased that the residents of Mount Pleasant are paying Mr. Loyce and Mr. Markovitz to protect their company from greedy farmers and homeowners who have something that billionaires want. If Mr. Loyce is to be believed, your interference in the free market has cost these residents in the Foxconn zones potentially millions of dollars. They might have been paid. Property offers outside the zone have already tripled, but the residents inside the Foxconn zones won't see that kind of value because after you light them and use eminent domain to squeeze a bargain price, they won't have any choice but to settle. And you have the nerve to call yourselves fair and even generous. You, none of you, are not qualified to act as real estate agents for Foxconn. None of you were elected to act as land speculators on behalf of a private, multimillion-dollar foreign corporation. So when it's time for discussion on this agenda tonight, please, do us all a favor and spare us the "I'm doing this for the good of the village" baloney. You are doing this for the benefit of Foxconn and the 860 million dollar hole you have dug for us. We all know how you're going to vote, and that is, after all, why Foxconn came here. They made a bet you'd be willing busboys, ready to clear the table for them. And when you prove them right, understand, we will aggressively and relentlessly work to replace you, starting tomorrow. Thank you.[235.12][235.12][applause]
Karen Hermanson, please, wishes to speak on blighting. Karen?
Good evening. My name is Karen Hermanson. I live at 7135 Old Spring Street. We've been Mount Pleasant residents since 1989, after my husband retired from the rain horn, and we returned home to Wisconsin. I can't imagine what it must be like to be told that your home will be taken from you because the elected representatives, who are supposed to represent you, are more interested in representing the interests of a foreign corporation, especially one with a terrible reputation in protecting the environment and taking care of their workers. I understand the need for jobs. Could the billions of taxpayer money we are giving to this foreign corporation could have gone to American entrepreneurs to start small businesses, to rebuild our infrastructure, to improve public education, to bring high-speed internet to all areas of Wisconsin, and to improve our healthcare system? And now you're putting your stamp of approval on this travesty by voting to force people out of their homes. This whole procedure has been rushed without due diligence, and too much has been done behind closed doors without enough honest public information input, not only at the state level, but right here in Mount Pleasant. All of you listening, this could happen to you. I do want to shout, have a shout-out to Matt Kramer of the CDA, who was the one member who voted his conscience. Thank you.[345.37][345.37][applause]
Wishes to speak about values.
25,357, my report from Pleasant. I wrote this in April, but it's still appropriate. Before property can be assessed or appraised, there has to be paperwork on the cost of the land and the value of the structures on the land. Real estate appraisers and assessments, both equal value. Our assessor uses assessments because the state will be assessing property at 100% in the future, up from 95% now. This village is allowing an agreement to vouch for companies or real estate appraisers' services to increase their normal rates. Valbridge and Nicholson and the other villages of Pooten normally charge $125 to $275 per appraisal order, but charges Mount Pleasant $3,000 to $4,500 per property. Comes out of payment in about 15 to 24 hours over the norm. Example, Valbridge gets 10 acres with home bids $3,000 for about two hours' worth. That's appraisal. Nicholson gets less than four acres with building, gets $4,500, less than two hours. Appraisal, right? About 10 companies with appraisal for a lucid group have used this method to make in our money. So far, about 130 companies have been appraised, appraised. These companies and others have received over $50,000 for appraisals that normally should cost around $30,000. They're spending our money. You might notice also that none of these companies are from Racine County. We pay the world, but not our own. We overspend on appraisals that have under-valued a beautiful, flourish, blighted area. Trustees reject the blight area vote and give the homeowners their proper respect and fitting compensation for their homesets. Disregards are over-the-price leadership and bringing in the homeowners for a face-to-face discussion with maybe Mr. McHugh also, so you'll know what the real facts are and appraisals before you vote. The only company hired on property eminent domain action is not from Racine, quite ironic. In a letter to the Journal Times before being elected, Mr. DeGroot stated that he was for openness and transparency. Now is the time to finally put that into action. Would you guys be doing the same thing if it was your home? Probably not. Thank you.[519.12][519.12][applause]
I'm bringing the end of a writ of speech. Last night, I had a difficult time trying to get to sleep. I'm sorry, I forgot. Down Chelsea 11th Highway V, Village of Mount Pleasant. I still am having a difficult time trying to get my arms around this. Board members, you took an oath of office to represent the people of Mount Pleasant. You need to uphold that. I'm almost positive, unfortunately, the final vote will be 63, going against possibly 52, but it will still pass. I cannot imagine a life of someone who lived in this utter chaos of the last three months and not knowing what tomorrow's going to bring for them. Going to bed every night till you finally have your dream home, many don't even know tomorrow what's going to be there for you to come home to because someone's going to take it away from you. I know you're going to vote tonight, and several other actions could be coming to play because of the actions that you're going to be taking. One of the trustees asked the backlash on why the villagers, there's negativity. The family farm from Mr. Tom Fleas, they paid him $49,000 an acre. Lo and behold, American Transmission comes along, which happens to be a public entity as well, and they paid Mount Pleasant almost $74,000. $880,000 profit for the village of Mount Pleasant. Since when is the village of Mount Pleasant in the business of real estate and making a profit? I just, I have a business myself, and I have people coming to me all the time, and asking me what's going on. And I can't, I just can't get my arms around this. These are people, these are the people that live in the village, and paid their dues. And you're going to throw them under the bus? Why God please do them to that. Thank you.[674.12][674.12][applause]
Ken Yorgen?
Yes.
Yeah, wishes to speak on land transactions? Name and address, sir.
Ken Yorgen. I was born and raised in Mount Pleasant, and I now live in 2018, somebody ever going to Racine. And I feel like a little bit of a prophet, disappointingly so. We discussed this issue of eminent domain several months ago, and I said, "Well, they're going to try to use it to blame property claim," which is, I think, unconstitutional, but welcome to give it a shot. I think you'd probably have made a decision. I've been told that a Mount Pleasant official, and I do not know the identity of, recently made a disturbing remark about the Foxconn project. The remark that was given to me is, "We're making millionaires." This concerns me, as it should every taxpayer, because it raises the possibility that making millionaires somehow displaced the greater good as a public policy goal. It would be reassuring to learn that this is not true, but such a reassurance should be based on facts. Toward that goal, I'm calling the village board to provide open access to all land transactions on all parcels involved in the project, from one year prior to its announcement through the completion of the final purchase. Such a day of dank should be easily understandable and contain information only about parcels involved. Individuals involved in any corporations involved in making any purchases should also be readily identifiable. In today's electronics record and environment, this should be a relatively simple request to satisfy, and I look forward to hearing your confirmation that it will be. Thank you.[789.12][789.12][applause]
Okay. Is there anything else that's still on paperwork that hasn't brought up already? Wishes to speak. Is there anybody else?
I need a ring.
Are you Tammy Wood?
No, I'm Karen.
What's your name?
Kathy DeVernes.
I don't know we have a name.
I put a form in that.
I think I have it. It says that way. I don't understand everything. It's stuck in the mail.
Well, Kathy's working on her paperwork. Is Tammy Wood here?
Hello, I am Tammy Wood. I am from Laval, which is the subcompany west side of the state, and I am here to support the landowners. We're Wisconsinites, and what we're seeing happening to our fellow community members, regardless of whether it's across the state or not, they're being evicted from their homes. Generational family farms. These are dream homes that they have bent over backwards to make their own. And now we have a foreign corporation coming in, and we're using eminent domain. And while I am not a, I don't profess to be a specialist in eminent domain, what I learned was that it was for public good. Having a foreign corporation that we're already paying, I believe it's something above $1,200 every man, woman, and child in the state of Wisconsin. For Wisconsinites to pay a foreign corporation to come into a town, to evict Wisconsinites, is one of the most abhorrent things I have ever seen in my entire time living and loving in this state. It is asinine. We are outraged, and I'm here to support the landowners, and I'm here to make sure that Foxconn knows we're not living in a pie in a sky thing. We don't dream world, we don't believe that we can stop it, but we do believe that we will make sure that they know we will hold them to account. We will make sure that they follow every letter of the carte blanche laws that have been bent over backwards and broken and maimed, and there's malfeasance. This is awful. You will be on the wrong side of history, and it will be marked. You will be judged. Thank you for taking the time, and I really hope that you have taken the time to listen to the landowners that really do not want to be evicted and homeless. With days, I have been working with some landowners that have worked 30 days to find any place to live. Kids, illness, life, sickness, and all of a sudden, you're putting this on a woman and saying, "Hey, you've got to move." And this is the only one that I personally know. I know that there are many more effective, and this is just heartbreaking to see. I really, I'm praying for you all. This decision is easy in the eyes of Wisconsinites.[970.12][970.12][applause]
Good evening. I'm Chaplain Dr. John Martini, and I'd like to read a few scriptures and then get to some points. I'd like to start in Leviticus, Chapter 19, verses 35 and 36. "You shall do no wrong in judgment; in measurement of weight or capacity, you should have just balances and weights, a just measure for I and the Lord, your God, that brought you out of Egypt." Amos 8:4-6. "Here it is, you who trample on the needy, to do away with the humble of the land, saying, 'When will the feast and the sabbath be over that we may sell and make the bushels smaller, thus shekel bigger, and achieve with dishonest scales, so as to buy the helpless for money and the needy for a pair of sandals.'" Proverbs 10, oh, I'm sorry, Proverbs 20 and 10. "Differing weights and differing measures are an abomination to the Lord." And now I bring it back to where I first want to start with. America has lost their vision of who God is. They have lost the awe of God. And so we go on and do our thing and do our thing without the care and the wherewithal that happens to others. I just want to read what God looked like to Moses and to the Israelites when he first announced himself to them. Moses brought the people out of the camp to meet God, and they took place at the foot of the mountain. Mount Sinai was all in smoke because the Lord had come down on it with lightning. The smoke went up like the smoke of a hot furnace, and while this whole episode happened, the whole mountain shook violently, and blasts of the horn grew louder and louder. Moses would speak, and God would answer him with thunder. We have lost our heart, people, and the reason I say this is I know Foxconn is coming, and we've made the decisions that Foxconn is coming, but there is a wrong way to take away property. The people across the way got through over $300,000 an acre. We're giving our people what? Who has the right to come up with what money? It's do who. So if you're going to make bushels fair, if you're going to make the shekel a shekel and not change, then whatever this person down over there is what this person should be giving over there. We've already had so many people have to give up their houses, properties, farms already, and they've done it voluntarily. I don't know what not voluntarily that means, but voluntarily, if that's what it is. So we need to make sure that those that are still here, those that are in their domiciles, are treated fairly, squarely, and righteously, because without the righteousness of God on this deal, the whole village is under its jurisdiction of the Lord, and that is not a wonderful thing to be found in the hands of a living God.[1128.12][1128.12][applause]
Okay. Kathy DeVernes?
Good evening. My name is Kathy DeVernes, and I'm a resident of Summers, 5602 First Place, Conosh, Wisconsin. I have two points to make. First, I get that I-94 corridor is a valuable piece of real estate, and that development was bound to happen. I get that for a state, city, village, township, municipalities to sustain, it needs to be able to employ its population. What I don't get is how the large landholders were paid 10 times the value of the general acre of undeveloped land, yet the property owners' in-laws to be deemed a blighted area are not being offered a fair price for their property. Why aren't they being offered 10 times the value of their property? People say they are holdouts, but their lives are being disrupted just as farmers' lives were. The Janusx's whole livelihood is being disrupted to the point that they're not only losing their home, but their source of income. Even if the holdouts were compensated, the current appraised value for their homes, it still doesn't make up for the little things. The trees they planted, the flowers they were growing, the gardens they started that took years and years to get to where they're at. All to be started over. The other improvements that don't show up in appraisal, the fences, the pools, the little things, the little extra things, each one of us add to our homes, and then there's a whole cost of moving. What if someone doesn't even qualify for a new loan? By purchasing enough of the surrounding lands just so you could rezone and get what you wanted all along is deplorable. It's sad that we elect people to look out for us only to find out we really don't have a voice. If this is allowed to happen, it'll be setting a precedent, and therefore, will any of us ever really own our property? Secondly, my biggest concern relates to the environment, our low water in Lake Michigan. I still would like to know exactly how Foxconn is going to treat their heavy metal sludge, for lack of know what else you call it. I'll just call it sludge. So hardly going to treat it. Where's the sludge going to end up? Who's going to oversee that it doesn't accidentally get dumped into Lake Michigan or leak into the ground? Will it be stored in thousands of barrels or hauled away? If it's hauled away, where will it go, and on what mode of transportation? But if there's spill, maybe I'm just ignorant to all of this, and all will be fine. I just think there are so many unanswered questions and feel that the state, Racine County, and the village rush to jump on the bandwagon without taking the time to truly address the big picture and the potential impact this project is and will continue to have on our community, our environment, and the future of our children. Thank you.[1294.62][1294.62][applause]
Okay. Janice Siska here. And if there's anybody else that wishes to speak, please bring your paperwork forward.
Good evening. My name is Janice Siska-Yelmar, and I was disappointed to see that the long-term planning that Mount Pleasant had done, that that entire plan was thrown out in order to allow Foxconn to come in. Anyone who had seen your long-term plan should have felt secure to know that they were living in an area that was deemed agricultural and would be for a long time. So I'm very disappointed that the long-term planning was tossed out. Everyone should have had a right to trust you and to trust in that plan, and they were let down. So I'm here in support of the landowners. I'm from Summers, and more Foxcons are going to come. They chose wisely in choosing this area because Lake Michigan is going to be one of the few sources of fresh water in the future when all the places that Foxconn's vacuum and headquarters face water shortages. So more people are going to come and bring their corporations here. It's going to be, it's a terrible precedent for any of us with homes that we cannot count on the sanctity of ownership of our property, that we are going to be tossed out for corporations. So I'm here in support of the landowners, that you will do what is fair for them, what is right for them, and that you will set the precedent that Wisconsin land needs to be kept pure, Wisconsin land needs to be planned, and Wisconsin land is not up for the highest bidder for other corporations to come and use it and trash it. Our Great Lakes, Lake Michigan, is way too important to be sold for what Foxconn is getting it for, and it's setting a precedent for all the other corporations who are going to be in areas of water endangerment to come and also do the same thing. Mount Pleasant has been a gorgeous community. You've done incredible things with the Route River Parkway. You've alleviated flooding by using your resources very wisely. I don't know what happened. Thank you.[1445.12][1445.12][applause]
Okay. So move on to business. For a consideration and action on Resolution 37-2018, a resolution designating a redevelopment area, declaring the redevelopment area to be a blighted area, and approving the redevelopment plan therefor. Mr. Markowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I'm just going to take you through a brief introduction to this, and then you can open it up for your own discussion. In 2017, a memorandum of understanding was agreed upon by the village, county, and Foxconn, which on December 1st, 2017, was incorporated into a formal development agreement. Many commitments were made in that development agreement by each party. One of the village's commitments was the assemblage of the properties in what has become known as Areas 1, 2, and 3 of the new tax implement district that was created last year. The village took the position at the outset that it would make every reasonable effort to acquire every needed property by agreement with the property owner. Beginning then, December 1st, and now, the village has acquired more than 100 properties and more than 80% of the 2,900-acre area to be assembled for the project, as well as areas needed for roadways and utilities, by reaching agreement with property owners in every single case. And the village has continued that effort and will continue its reasonable efforts to acquire those properties remaining by agreement. As you heard tonight, and you've heard other times, that may not be possible, and village may have to resort to other methods to acquire the properties needed for this project. All of the acquisitions will follow Wisconsin law. To address the need and the costs associated with financing the bonds required to pay for public improvements, this village's community development authority has carried out a very specific statutory procedure, which included all of the following. First, timely notification of every affected property. Two, holding an extensive public hearing on March 20th of this year. Three, receiving additional materials from any interested party during an additional 15-day period following the public hearing. Then, consideration was taken by the community development authority of the village on May 9th, and the decision was made to forward to this board the CDA's findings, conclusions, and recommendations to this board.
commitments were made in that development agreement by each party. One of the village's commitments was the assemblage of the properties in what is becoming known as Areas 1, 2, and 3 of the new tax implement district that was created last year. The village took their position at the outset, that it would make every reasonable effort to acquire every needed property by agreement with the property owner. Beginning then, December 1st, and now, the village has acquired more than 100 properties and more than 80% of the 2,900-acre area to be assembled for the project, as well as areas needed for roadways and utilities, by reaching agreement with property owners in every single case. And the village has continued that effort and will continue its reasonable efforts to acquire those properties remaining by agreement. As you heard tonight, and you've heard other times, that may not be possible, and the village may have to resort to other methods to acquire the properties needed for this project. All of the acquisitions will follow Wisconsin law. To address the need and the costs associated with financing the bonds required to pay for public improvements, this village's community development authority has carried out a very specific statutory procedure, which included all of the following. First, timely notification of every affected property. Two, holding an extensive public hearing on March 20th of this year. Three, receiving additional materials from any interested party during an additional 15-day period following the public hearing. Then, consideration was taken by the community development authority of the village on May 9th, and the decision was made to forward to this board the CDA's findings, conclusions, and recommendations to this board by the 6 to 1 vote. All of those findings, conclusions, and recommendations are contained within the resolution before you tonight. The resolution has three components. First, the component requests the board's approval to establish the boundaries of the project area. Second, is to declare the area within boundaries to be a blighted area as defined by statute. And everyone in this room has heard on more than one occasion what the statutory definition is, and finally to approve the plan. The boundaries that are recommended by the CDA coincide with the boundaries of Areas 1, 2, and 3 of the tax implement district. The area is the same. The plan is consistent with the plan that was adopted by this board after being recommended by the CDA last year. That's the tip of the plan. The village board needs to act on the proposed resolution, as the resolution has much to do with borrowing funds, to enable the village to discharge its responsibilities. But as I have heard from every single member of this board on numerous occasions, whether this resolution is approved or not, the village will continue its efforts to acquire every needed property by agreement with the property owner.
Before we go into questions, your comments, is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution 37-2018, a resolution designating a redevelopment area, declaring the redevelopment area to be a blighted area, and approving the redevelopment plan.
I hear a motion. Is there a second? Second? Motion on a second regarding Resolution 37-2018. Is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Mark Wilson?
Crickets. Kind of expected it. Okay, I'm going to try to be as polite as I can and try not to ramble offstage too much. First off, I am in favor of Foxconn. I want everyone to know that. Manufacturing, I feel, is the lifeblood of capitalism. I think the potential for good is there. There are a lot of issues to be dealt with, but overall, if dealt with intelligently by good people, I think this could be a very big benefit to the southeastern Wisconsin. My biggest issue is, one, we have been running down a hallway with scissors on this project since its inception. Speed kills. Two, I do not like some of the ways which we are moving this project forward, specifically blighted. The verbal gymnastics that goes on in a court of law are mainly focused on where the technicalities are and the interpretations of the wording. And I think that that is kind of where the hat is being hung for the designation reasoning for blighted. The original statement that opens this up says that in this section, unless the context clearly indicates otherwise. To me, what that more or less says is you don't get to choose the sentence, you have to choose the meaning of the paragraph. And the idea that we are going to use phrases like obsolete platting, or open land, or diversity of ownership, a lot of that is rural America. And I don't feel this particular reasoning is sound. Now, we have an incredibly intelligent, eminent domain lawyer working with the village, spearheading this issue. I'm not about to get into whether or not this will hold up in a court of law, if it goes there, but I will say that I've read the statute forwards and backwards and up and down, and the word blighted is there for a reason. They don't like that word there, and there's a reason they don't like that word there. It's because anyone that thinks blighted is thinking there has to be something wrong with the property. There's nothing wrong with any of these properties. They are beautiful properties. I've got pictures of these properties, and I say I would be happy to own any one of them. We're using a technicality to forward the village's interests. I don't agree with that. And as far as his advice, he's telling us this stands. This reasoning stands. He's also one that advocated that at a CDA meeting, no public comment on the agenda item was going to be allowed. I wasn't at that meeting. When I found out that that was the case, my eyes rolled into the back of my head. To say that we allow public comment, but we're going to tell you what you can't comment on? If somebody wanted to give me a recipe for brownies and public comment, they're fully in their rights to do that. So if I'm getting that advice from this lawyer, I'm going to question the advice he's giving me now for my decision to declare blighted or not. It's my job to question. Hard decisions. Well, I've been told I don't make the hard decisions. Well, the easy decision is just say, lawyer says so, sentence says so, we can do this. But I have a conscience. And when I stand before God, and he says, did you determine it was blighted for a legal technicality to further this project along, or was it actually blighted in the meaning of that entire statute? I'm going to tell him the same thing I'm going to tell everyone down here. It's not blighted. I had this incident occur a couple of years ago on another purchase right next door. I had five lawyers telling me, we can take a dry noodle out of the box and stick it to the wall. We don't have to cook the noodles and have ramen churro. I'm sorry, I did not believe it then, and neither did the village board. So with all of those things going on, and the idea that we as a village municipality have the authority and the ability to make this decision, and the fact that everybody from, let's just say, the state on up has done a Pontius Pilate and washed their hands and don't want to even get into this fray, I don't blame them, because the authority rests here. I haven't been able to say the laws are only convenient until they're inconvenient. The DNR, ah, wetlands, spill them in, the water compact, ah, public use, we'll throw that out. No wetland restrictions. I mean, it's amazing how the laws are being interpreted for a multi-billion dollar company. So with all of that in place, the only way I can kind of wrap this up is, I want to read something that I thought was relevant. It's from a Hans Christian Andersen paper called "Tiersen's Nie Klang", but he hasn't got anything on, the little child said. "Did you hear such innocent crap ever?", said his father. And one person whispered to another what the child had said. "He hasn't got anything on." A child says he hasn't got anything on. "But he hasn't got anything on, the whole town cried out last." "The emperor shivered, for he suspected they were right. But he thought this procession has got to go on, so he walked more proudly than ever, as his village board held high the train that wasn't there at all. This blighted designation is as naked as the emperor." Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
I will say something.
Go ahead.
The term blighted area is not a physical description. It's a strategic decision to enable us to borrow double tax exempt funds. It is also definition substantially impairs or arrests the sound growth of the community. So we proceed.
It's wrong.
The growth of a community.
It's not, it's not. Quiet, please.
For a corporation.
Quiet, please. Okay. Are there being other discussion? Roll call, both, please.
Close.
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
Please.
Absolutely not.
Eastman?
Aye.
You?
Aye.
Your group?
Aye.
Most gracious.
Howard.
Charles.
What are your thoughts about what you heard tonight?
Well, it's very disappointing, because we've got a critical decision coming up in November. It's going to have, what's happening here is not just Mount Pleasant, all over the state's affected by the fact that the billions of dollars that'll be going into this project are going to be less money for roads, for schools, for the environment, for investing in small businesses that'll actually create jobs all over the state. If this is such a great idea, they should pay for it themselves, not in asking the taxpayers.
Please sign up on the forms, so if you want to be involved, we will get you involved. We will find your talents, and we will highlight them. If you want to help pass flyers out, you want to help with the stages, the permits, the things that we need, we can volunteer you what you need to do. If you've got ideas, we would love to hear them. Please, if you have any questions, I have cards with my contact information, you can have that. And thank you all for standing up for our state, because this starts here. It starts here and is going to ripple throughout our state. I will feel it here in Sauk County on the far west side of the state. Not as soon as you will, but we will feel it. We are here, and Wisconsin is standing with you. Thank you.
There's so many new faces. Everybody, my name is Kelly Gallagher. Shh. Hang on just a second. My name is Kelly Gallagher, and I represent Better Mount Pleasant, which is a grassroots organization. We've actually been around for a few years here in Mount Pleasant. Foxconn has sort of, you know, put us a bit in the fast lane, right? Put us all in the fast lane. So I want to thank a few people for being here tonight. Just I want to point out, our previous village trustee, John Hansen, who is no longer in office, but he hasn't forgotten about us here in Mount Pleasant. He is here. State Representative Greta Newbauer is here. Also Matt Flynn, who is running for governor, is here. Not every elected official in the state or in the area has let us down. Many of, there have been some, not as many as we need, and that's why we need you. And I don't know if all of you were here when I spoke before, but I want to make very clear that what I said this evening was not a threat, is if you vote yes, we are targeting your seat, and we are starting tomorrow. And what I want to say is there's some really, really great people thinking about running in Mount Pleasant next April, and I am one of them. Please, our organizations are all coming together. We have so many great organizations, and even the Libertarian Party, like contacted me too. This is a wild collaboration of people who share the same specific values. So find us on Facebook at Better Mount Pleasant. Connect with us, message me, and thank you for being here so much. Thank you.
And get your friends registered to vote.